Okay, we'll call any order. We'll have a prayer led by Congressman Zimmerman and a flag later at the Capitol. The board.
Yeah.
Will it come up here?
Up here and the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution and the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord, we're just ever so thankful that at this time we have the opportunity to serve our community and we just ask that you would grant us wisdom to make good decisions and help us to always have the citizens that present office in mind when we make these decisions. With those that are protecting us in their community and helping them safe and just watch over those that are traveling that are on council life, who has the citizens who use me.
Okay. Propose the agenda.
Make a motion will be approved the agenda.
Motion by Brent. Second by Larry. All in favor say aye. Okay, motion passes. Adam D has some comments.
Just, I just wanted to come up here and...
Introduce yourself.
Oh, I'm Christian Zimmerman. I did the Eagle Project this last weekend. We painted the community center and I just wanted to come up and personally thank Bryant, Brent, Thatcher, Gary and Larry. They put their time in and came and volunteered even though they weren't on duty to, and they didn't have to do it. It wouldn't have happened without their volunteer duty and I just wanted to thank the council for giving me this opportunity. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For your hard work. Yeah. Okay. I have Dee from Katie Morgan who got her public library.
I guess I missed it in there, but she was appointed, I think, three or four meetings back to a two-month term and now she's just extending that term to, I believe, a year. Sorry that slide didn't get dropped in there, but... So, I believe you spoke with her a little bit.
Yeah.
She's a Goddard native, so she's reflected there in the agenda packet.
Okay, I have an app.
That would be approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of July 19, 2021. Accounts payable dated July 21, 2021 for $141,707.04 and accounts payable dated July 28, 2021 for $155,921.96.
Does anyone have any questions? Motion by Michael.
Second.
Second by Brent. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Item H, new business. Page one.
We should file a 2020 audit presentation.
Our auditor Randy Ford's here to present our 2020 financial statements.
Right, thank you. We'll give you just a quick run through the audit. Obviously, we do this every year, so really no big changes this year. Couple of things I do want to point out if you're following along with either electronic copy or paper copy. It'd be page number two, about three or four pages in on the PDF. Right in the middle of that page is our opinion on your financial statement. That's what you hire us to do is to conduct an audit and issue an opinion accordingly. In our opinion, based on your financial statement, based on our audit, is that your financial statement is fairly presented in all material respects. That's what's called an unmodified opinion. So in terms of the audit, that's as good as we can give you. We don't look at every transaction, so we can't say everything's perfect, but based on our audit, we didn't come across any problems, no significant adjustments, anything like that. That's really the most important part of the audit is the opinion. If you go a couple more pages, is your actual financial statement, it's a summary of your activity for the year. It's a reflection or a summary of your, of all your funds together, getting cash receipts, expenditures. Key thing is you're ending in on current cash balances. We didn't come across any negative balances, once again, any misstatements, any adjustments or anything like that. So the information you've received at year end matches up to the audit, so once again, no issues there. So then the notes to the financial statement, just explain information about the city, information about your basis of accounting, things related to different compliance requirements like, different statutory requirements like collateral at the bank, transfers, those types of things. Once again, no issues in that area. And then lastly, there's a schedule related to your budget. We didn't come across any noncompliance with the budget laws. So, once again, no noncompliance. During the course of the audit, we have to consider about 35 or so compliance requirements. Once again, no, no noncompliance with that. Then I did hand out just a, a two-page letter and that's a summary of the audit. Any difficulties, significant findings or anything like that would be included in that. You'll notice I go through there that there weren't any. The staff out here is extremely cooperative. Anything we need, they provide for us, answer our questions, give us the information. So they're great to work with and no issues there. So, really kind of the key thing is an unmodified opinion or a clean audit, some people prefer it. No noncompliance, no adjustments, no, no issues or difficulty.
I've got one question. Well, I guess the council met mad on a good job.
Out of trouble for one more year. And, you know, Randy, Randy's always been great for, for many years we've worked with him now. Staff is, you know, it's always hectic when I start handing out the list of stuff to collect and staff's always great. Our April in the library, you know, she's always getting her stuff to us ASAP, so it's a pretty smooth process for the most part. There's little COVID hiccups the last two years, but everything got sorted out in the end, so.
Thank you, Randy.
Oh, you're welcome. Thank you.
Thanks, Randy.
We have Chad Banga and Brett Lutowski here from Trans Systems to kind of provide an overview of the three integrated projects along Kellogg and the Starbond District to just kind of provide an update and answer any questions that the council may have. We started the R-Cut back on May of 2019. We also then added a supplemental for the interior connector road at the May 17 meeting of this year and then the 183rd Street geometric that we peeled off from the frontage road realignment that was completed late last year. Was, is a separate project as well with all of these projects being included into the 2021-2022 capital improvement program. This is the R-Cut, kind of just a display of the connector as well as some modifications to the connection on Kellogg and then this would be the 183rd with the frontage road connector and the pedestrian pathway highlighted here. Both of these are in your agenda packets and with that, I'll turn it over to Chad and Brett.
Good evening, thank you, Brian. My name's Chad Banga with Trans Systems and Brian did a great job of doing an overview and has done a great job leading us on this particular project with you guys. We are very glad to be part of your guys' team on designing all of this. I thought since it's been a little while, I'd like to give you guys just a general overview of the different aspects that are occurring and then end with being able to field any questions that you guys may have. So as Brian said, this project originally started with an R-Cut or restricted crossing U-turn. The original project essentially had changes to the median area along Kellogg in front of the Genesis Sports Complex with a connector to Crown Drive. We completed the survey and design, we call this field check, level design, which gets submitted to KDOT. In reviewing, when KDOT reviewed that, they looked at the current design and thought that now would be a good time to make improvements to eastbound Kellogg. So as you guys recently saw up there, there's been an overlay on eastbound Kellogg that stops generally right in front of the Genesis Sports Complex. From where it stops on the west side to the concrete begins at the intersection at 183rd, that will be a full depth replacement of Kellogg. So that means that they will completely remove all of the concrete and we will build that back up. That is being done by KDOT. We are incorporating that to our design. Well, that makes a significant change to what we had done for the median because now it allows us to do a different profile and modify the drainage actually to give you a more superior project. So we took what we had in field check and not completely redid it, but had to start over in another way. We then completed that design and moved to what we call office check. Office check was submitted to KDOT earlier this year and they liked the changes to that. With that, it was brought to our attention that the city would like to include a connector frontage road to that area, which as Brian showed previously, included a roundabout and then with that would also include pedestrian connections between the R-Cut and 183rd Street. Not only is that a great thing, but KDOT was thrilled with having this as well and in almost quoting them, they said, "We would, we'd love to have this in the original one, but we didn't know how we were going to be able to put it in there." So KDOT was very happy with this idea and they're fully supporting it and although this is, construction will be paid for a lot with the city on this one, KDOT has increased the overall budget that they have for the R-Cut project to help facilitate some of these improvements. So all of this, excuse me, the R-Cut and the connector will be a single set of plans. In addition to that, we are making the improvements at 183rd Street. Which, do you have that image, Thatcher?
This one?
Thank you. So at 183rd Street going southbound, we will have a dedicated right turn lane, a dedicated through lane and a dedicated left turn lane. Northbound, there will be a dedicated right turn lane. All of these improvements, including the connector road and the R-Cut, were all part of a traffic study completed by Trans Systems earlier in this whole process. Schedule-wise, as you guys recently approved this, as soon as we got that contract, we were able to get our survey team out there and they pretty much just surveyed or gotten the additional survey needed in the purple areas. They completed that last month and hope to give us the base survey files either this week or next week and that will give us the catalyst we need to start doing the actual design on the road, but that's the current concept. The big question is always, when is construction going to start? So right now, we're tentatively planning for a spring letting, which means that the contract would be bid by a contractor and then we'd hope for construction to begin in spring of 2022. Another question that has been brought up is if this will be one big project or two separate projects. Due to the funding streams tied with KDOT, these will be two separate projects. The 183rd Street improvements and the pedestrian connectors will be one and the connector road and the archive will be another. It is our goal to let both of those projects at one time, which should hopefully help with competitive bids and contractors being able to see both projects at one time, which would reduce their mobilization costs. That gives a very brief summary of the different aspects that have been going on and what we see for this project. With that, I would be happy to field any questions or concerns that you guys have.
What is that little pink line that comes to sort of a triangle up there, North and 54?
What's not shown in that particular aerial that we have is your new frontage road that goes towards the north.
That's around the bank.
So that is just showing where we would be crossing the new frontage road.
Oh, okay, okay. So does the state communicate with the other arm of the state with Starbond projects and does KDOT deal with commerce because we're going to be dealing with this massive project coming to an end towards the end of 2022 and if we're building this after almost at the same time, that's, that's going to be a real cluster and that might affect Starbond in different ways. So I know that the intentions were to have this done and let out sooner than first quarter next year, so what's been the delay? Is it the connectivity road?
The biggest delay at the beginning is when the change was made by KDOT to redo eastbound Kellogg. So our original design was well on schedule, all of pieces were there and then when they decided to do a full-depth reconstruction, which again is a very positive and it's being funded by KDOT, it changed a lot of the design that we have for the initial median. So we were able to move forward with that. With the addition of the connection road, which is a key piece to all of this and something that in the original traffic report was something that we were going to suggest in the future or was in the report to have in the future, doing that now is overall going to save the city money, but we want to make sure it gets incorporated with the R-Cut project because we can't put some of the improvements in without a connector road.
You said they're going to change eastbound Kellogg, are they going to take up the median or are they going towards the ditch or?
The general alignment of eastbound Kellogg will stay where it's at. We're just redoing all of the pavement. There will be slight shifts because we're filling in a lot of that median with the U-turns used in the restricted crossing U-turn or the R-Cut.
There's like going to be added lanes up and down.
There will be added turn lanes, but there will still be two through lanes in each direction. Construction, we're, the idea of course these will come together at all times. Traffic will be on Kellogg, both eastbound and westbound, so we will maintain those at all time and we will also be maintaining access to the Genesis Sports Complex at all times. So there will never be an inability to get to those facilities.
You said that KDOT increased their budget, the connectivity portion. What did they increase or was, my understanding is it was, if they had any leftovers, who would be going to that, but maybe they did.
I don't think, I don't have the specific details, but they were maximizing the ability that they had to, to use funds for.
Just with purchasing power pretty much, doing it all at the same time.
And compiling residual funds from unexpended projects elsewhere.
Yeah. Improvements at 183rd work was a different funding stream commonly called a C-clip and so that's helping to fund that project.
So we're splitting up the two projects, the connectivity and R-Cut and then the other portions kind of separate. Are they going to be done at the same time or are they just over and done at the same time or?
The priority, so general phasing of construction is we'll have to build the roundabout in that connectivity road there so that traffic, that will be able to be built without affecting any existing traffic. So once that is constructed, then we'd be able to put, that little, that little sliver up there is a median that goes across the frontage road and so we have to have the roundabout section constructed before we're going to put that across there. Generally, we see that a larger contractor would probably get a project of this size and so they'll be able to do multiple aspects of that project at one time. So with 183rd, it's depending on how they want to phase some of their, their work as well, but in our construction documents, we always put stipulations in there of what has to remain open in some of the critical items of work.
So we're in the office check process portion?
So the R-Cut itself has gone through the office check, so it's actually ready for the final check. However, we're adding in the connector road for the very first time. So the R-Cut again is at final, the connector road's going to be added in, KDOT probably won't be, do a real heavy review of the roundabout because that's mostly funded on the city side, but they want to make sure all the pieces work together. So we hope that this last check with the restricted crossing U-turn piece will go very smooth because we've received two checks worth of comments from KDOT.
Just making sure that this round, the connectivity portion flows with the R-Cut?
Yeah, they want to see, you know, that, how we're putting in that median, that median's new and they want to see probably construction phasing just to make sure that, you know, we wouldn't be shutting down Genesis or we wouldn't have a huge impact to travelers.
So when do we think we'll be done with all of the checks and the office checks and the lines? Should we be done with all of that by the end of this year?
Yes.
Okay.
So it should be right towards the end of the year and then it being city let, not KDOT let. So if this were KDOT, there is generally about a four-month period between the time we do our final plans to the time that they can bid it. That varies a little bit, but generally four months. We're able to not have to do that on this because it's being let by the city. We will have traditionally a 30-day period where we advertise the project before the bids come in. So to be clear, it'd be towards the end of this year, the beginning of next year so that we can have a spring letting. Regardless of when it were to let, obviously the contractor typically won't be starting in the middle of winter, so when you can get a full construction season by a contractor where he gears up for an entire year's worth of work, he'll start that in the spring and so we're fitting right into the contractor's schedule as well. Like for instance, a building too, a lot of times you see a contractor with a building, get a lot of the structure up before winter and that way during the winter they can be inside doing all the interior work. In this particular case, there's not a lot of interior work on, with roadways, so that's generally what they like to do.
Okay. It's all really all the questions I had, I just, you know, we've been working on this for a long time and it feels like we've had one speed bump after another and hopefully we can, hopefully we can get a bid out again in next year or something. That would be nice.
Mayor, if I could, you might, I might just ask Chad if you could go back to that other slide, Thatcher, you might just introduce the idea that the southbound frontage road is no longer going to be through. You can't, that, that median is a raised median, that's the safety factor that KDOT like to add, the magent or the cyan colored lines there. So that's the reason to have the roundabout and go around is so that frontage road, you won't be able to go through two-way traffic there. You have to go down Crown Drive and then through the roundabout and then back up.
Oh, it's not the whole intention of doing that.
To eliminate that conflict of traffic interfering with the traffic going out to the R-Cut.
So yes, I'm glad you brought that up, Harlan. The beauty of this particular piece is that all traffic entering the Genesis site or such would be coming from Kellogg. And when they leave, they can, they can go out through that as well. Now the frontage road, the south side frontage road will not allow traffic to go all the way through there with that raised median, which is why we need the connector road. As Harlan mentioned, that was, becomes a safety aspect. So other similar cities, we see when the frontage road is very close like that to a major intersection, we have a significant increase in crashes. And although it hasn't been developed, in the original traffic report, we said that we could do it without that median, but we highly recommend of putting it in as quick as possible due to, due to the crash potential there.
So the connectivity portion will help reduce kind of the volume from that front area, frontage area, flow of the traffic kind of prevent.
Well, I don't know if it'll reduce it, but it will, it will, it'll eliminate the conflict that could occur with the traffic setting there, ready to go north onto 54, waiting for the light and then there's traffic coming across the frontage road that, that it kind of eliminates that potential conflict for a lot of accidents can occur.
That's why you guys weren't wanting to split to try to do the R-Cut first and then move on to that, you're wanting to do it at the same time?
That particular piece is, because that raised median can't go in until we have a connectivity.
Now Chad, I see how the eastbound traveler can go down Crown Drive, go to the roundabout, get back, the westbound guy, he goes down to the roundabout, comes to the Crown Drive, he can't really continue west, can he? He's got to be, have a destination of the Starbond then. Is that right?
Um.
Westbound on the frontage road.
Generally, at, at that particular piece, again, if he was coming in off of Kellogg, he would be able to.
He would, yeah, if he's coming off Kellogg, but I just went, the westbound frontage road traffic would.
So, so I live over here in the original EOG Goddard and I go up to Walmart, will I not be able to take that southbound back and forth or is there still going to be a way for me to take, to like get from Walmart to Goddard on Service Road or do I have to take the highway now?
Um, I mean, from this point, if you were coming from the west side of town going east, you would be able to do this. You would have to turn onto Crown Drive and go through the roundabout.
Okay.
Um, now going home from east to west, then if you chose to do the frontage road, you would then get on Kellogg at the R-Cut, make a U-turn and, excuse me, you would get on, at the R-Cut, the purpose of the R-Cut is restricted crossing U-turn, so you would make your U-turn and you could come back west. Alternatively, you would probably just leave Walmart, go to 183rd, go west. So like everything, there would be a little bit of a learning curve on people finding their best routes.
It helps us really just paying off Starbond because the more volume they have in our Starbond district, the more they will gain their sales packs through that.
So the...
Is the, sorry, is the 183rd portion of this whole project, that's not holding anything else, is it?
No.
So that's really, it's really just finishing the connector portion and getting that done?
Physically, it's not holding anything up. The improvements at 183rd were part of the original traffic study. Those were all recommendations that would be needed due to the increased traffic coming through there, but no, it is not holding up any of the construction of the R-Cut. The other piece is you guys are developing that area there on the Starbond with traffic being at the roundabout, it's going to offer now premium locations for people to develop some of those parcels because they'll have increased traffic flow through that area.
Is there some sort of like public education that KDOT asks to be done or can be done? Like just maybe the city could post it on their website or something regarding how you navigate an R-Cut if you've never been through one before?
Sure, there's many things out there, whether it's for an R-Cut or even a roundabout. We recently completed a large roundabout near Rose Hill and the city posted a lot of things on Facebook, videos, how-tos, and that seemed to have great reception with everybody. Also, new things are, are new, but on a particular R-Cut, there's going to be a lot of large signs with arrows that will help people get through it.
Yeah. And 183rd and 199 signals are all synced up with this, correct?
Yes, the R-Cut will bring in several traffic signals, that's how it works and there will be coordination between all those signals. So instead of them being separate entities, you should have positive progressive flow all the way through this. That also helps the signals by the way they're timed, helps keep traffic flow moving at a safe speed. The way I say that is if they get a green light at 183rd Street and they were to accelerate significantly, they may have a red light right ahead of them which would stop, but if, if you're... But if, if your timing gets right with progressive signals, it helps flow through all of, all of Goddard.
How's the communications frame between you guys and KDOT?
How is the what?
How's the communication frame? Are you guys getting good responses or?
Yes, KDOT, we work with KDOT a lot. Most of that's done through meetings and emails, but we have a good working relationship with them. I can tell you right now, KDOT is very busy with a lot of projects, which is a good thing for the state. So we've been working with them. This is a priority for not only KDOT, but for us as well. So I'm really looking forward to getting the survey here very soon so we can keep moving forward on these other aspects.
And that's in about two weeks?
I, I assume, yes. He told me at the beginning of August, late August at the most, or excuse me, middle of August at the latest.
Chad, if I could?
Yes.
I'm Bradley Castor, Trans Systems. So this is our second R-Cut that we're designing. We're designing another one right now up in the Kansas City area. It's a K-7 parallel parkway. Working directly with KDOT on that one as well. The goal or the communication to do the public involvement is not to do a lot of public meetings. It is to do it through websites, through cities and the agencies there. We'll do something very similar here. So there will be a lot of information provided and to be able to teach people how these will work. This one and the one in Kansas City are the first two R-Cuts that are being designed in the state of Kansas. They are designed in other parts of the country. Minnesota is kind of the leading state that does innovative intersections like this. This is KDOT's first one. They're very, very interested in it. It's why it's gone a little bit slower than a typical project because it's brand-new to KDOT. So they're really excited about it. They are putting their very best engineers reviewing our design. We're collaborating a lot. So it's, it's really getting a lot of good eyes on it. And I wanted to address a question I think Brent you asked, or no, actually, I think Michael might have been you. So if you're on the frontage road going westbound, you will have to go the roundabout, through the roundabout. Oh, no, you have to go up to 18, to Kellogg. But the, the traffic numbers on the frontage road going westbound is a very small number. So we're not impacting very many people. But if you were at Walmart and you wanted to get to the ball fields, you certainly can do that.
Sure.
So, and that's the goal. I just want to make sure that point was clear.
Right. It's big goals.
That's right.
So if this don't work, who gets the blame? You or KDOT?
I'm sorry?
If this don't work, who gets the blame? You or KDOT?
Both of us.
Chad's closer so we can.
Yeah, yeah. Same, not too far away, so.
Junction City on 70 and?
That's a diversion diamond.
What is that?
That's a diversion diamond.
Oh, okay.
So those are grades separated. So a little bit different. This is, if you think about a roundabout, it's just a, a longer.
Well, I mean, Ferdonia has one.
Ferdonia's roundabout, yep.
Yeah.
Yep, there's several across the state. We've designed a lot of them. We helped write the KDOT design manual for roundabouts. This is just basically expand, just elongating it. And you take out those left turn conflicts. So it makes it a much safer aggregate intersection.
You guys are pretty confident spring letting?
Yes.
Might be a stupid question, but is there no way of trying to push them a little harder? No way of trying to get it down a little quicker?
Well, you know, we're going to push and get it done as fast as we can, but you don't want construction to start before next spring. This is not something you want to start in the winter. So timing wise, really works out great for, for you. It's great for contractors to be able to bid a project in the winter and know that they got this starting in spring so they can schedule out their work for the next year. So timing-wise, it really.
Will Kellogg have, will they veer off and use the shoulders so we have two lanes? Or will it be down to one lane each way when they're doing this construction?
When they do the construction, we will be pushing both eastbound and westbound to the current westbound lanes.
So it'll be down to one lane?
Yes. And the reason for that is because it will decrease the time that it takes and the contractor will be able to tear up all of Kellogg at one time. So there's a time and a money savings doing it that method.
If they're not going any farther into the ditch, are they because of our water line and stuff that's going through there?
No, and we poach all those utilities, which means that we've located, physically located them all. And so we're working to make sure we avoid any relocations of that sort. Public utilities, or excuse me, private utilities may have to lower in a few places, but that's, they're within the right of way and that's something that they're required to do.
Well, that's all the questions I have. Thank you guys for coming in.
Problem. Thank you guys for the opportunity.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Honorable governing body, this is just kind of a letting you know thing. National Night Out is a yearly celebration here we have in August in coordination with the Chamber who is putting that on this year, managing it. It's going to be Friday, August 13th, from 6:00 to 10:00 PM. And they have requested to host a short five-minute fireworks show between the time of 9:30 and 10:00. Is that correct? Anytime between then?
Yeah.
Okay.
As soon as it starts.
So I, so as soon as it's dark, basically, I guess, wrap up the event there. The Chamber will be managing that fireworks show. So the last event, public event where fireworks were discharged was obviously the July 2nd Goddard Lions Club fireworks show. So city staff will inform Sager County that that's going on. So the show will be hosted by Victory Pyrotechnics and shot in the open field of the Genesis property east of 199th Street. Victory Fireworks has been in business for four years and served many towns in Kansas. Victory is providing the insurance with event sponsors listed as the City of Goddard and the Chamber of Commerce. So it isn't our code that you're technically not allowed to give off fireworks, but there are exception exemptions to that. So our governing body may at its discretion grant permission at any time for the public display of fireworks for responsible individuals, organizations. Should not be a fire hazard or anything to persons or surrounding property. Basically, what that means, after discussing with the lawyer, is that whereas for like the Summer Ball Showdown, that's a privately sponsored fireworks show, so we have to actually pass a resolution to waive the prohibition of that. This is more of a, just an approval by the governing body, so to speak, since it's publicly sponsored by the city. So this is that open field where that fireworks show will be shot from. No financial to that. Basically, just a voice vote and a consensus, consensus among the council will allow for this to happen unless there's any questions.
Is there any problem with it?
No.
No? Motion due. Motion by Michael, second by Larry. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Good evening. So this is a, is a quick update as well on just your approval for a vehicle to be sold. We have all read it off here. On April 24th, 2021, police vehicle number 3216 Dodge Charger was involved in the crash and our insurance company estimated it a loss that was totaled. In May, city planner Mike Naskogun experienced mechanical issues with his assigned Tahoe, which formerly was a police car. Katic Shop estimated the repair cost to be around $8,100. And Public Works took the vehicle questioning that high price and was able to repair it for $500. And they're still able to drive it. So some side issues I dealt with. Thank you, Public Works, for obviously taking over that.
For getting a good galant vehicle there.
Yeah, yeah. And Daisy actually did have a need for its use anyhow. They didn't just have it as an extra coffee yielding vehicle. The current fleet that we have right now consists of 12 vehicles for use with one officer potentially returning for deployment in July 2022 and one officer open position in the process being filled. We recommend holding off on the purchase of this replacement vehicle for the one that was crashed until the next purchase of our vehicles in 2022, just because of our current staffing, because of the, the loss of, of chief and officer open position and a deployment position. So I don't feel we need to buy a vehicle just because we had one just to replace it. I also recommend selling this 2012 Chevy Tahoe at auction through Purple Wave. It was formerly Sergeant Circle's primary patrol vehicle. And a 2014 Chevy Impala, we retired it from detective use and replaced the detective vehicle with this 2016 Ford Explorer, which was formerly used by the Chief of Police. The Chevy Impala will be downfitted, so the emergency equipment will be taken out of it and transferred the vehicle to code enforcement for planning and code, for the planning and code department. The community development director is currently using our police department animal patrol vehicle and makes it available sometimes for use. And Mike would probably appreciate not having a vehicle that smells like a dog. So the city's, am I correct?
That's fair.
Okay. The city's vehicle insurance company provided a payment of $19,000, a little over $19,000 for the replacement of that wrecked Charger. And so you know, a fully outfitted Ford Explorer, police interceptor costs $55,780.72 for a difference of 36, roughly 36 and a half thousand. So like I said, no new vehicle purchase is necessary right now. And 24 has already been stripped. There'll be an exhibit photo there for you to see it. And 29, the Impala will also be stripped with its emergency vehicle or equipment. I also put in a chart reflecting the current vehicle assignments and the total list of the police, animal control, code enforcement, and the Public Works vehicles that came from our department. I don't have a whole list of all Public Works vehicles because it really doesn't affect what we're trying to accomplish and relay at this point. Right there, you can see that exhibit that shows from the beginning with vehicle 23. That's the oldest one. That's the one we were able to turn into the animal control vehicle, put into basically a split kennel in the back so we can have two different dogs in there at one time if we need to. And all around all of our equipment. 24 is the one we want to decommission and give that at auction. It should bring a pretty decent price. 26 is the one that we gave to Public Works after they were able to fix some stuff for very cheap. And you can kind of see the other vehicles here. This one right there, that's the Impala that I was speaking of, we would transfer. And that is the one that was totaled conveniently. It did have high mileage. And then the remaining vehicles here, and these are the two newest police cars that are sitting out back that will get assigned. And it'll probably, I just put it on there for sake of that purpose, but it's not going to sit there for that purpose. It'll probably get assigned and be used much quicker than that. That is vehicle 24, the Tahoe we will like to Purple Wave. And that is the Chevy Impala. No financial cost expenditure. Approve this form. And it's recommended that you approve the sale of the 2012 Chevy Tahoe, police vehicle 24 through the Purple Wave and approve the decommission of vehicle 29 for the use by the community development director.
Have you got those Dodge Chargers? Because you thought you liked them, or do you no longer like them, the Dodge Chargers?
No, I mean, we like them and we have experienced just as little or just as much mechanical needs as the Chevy Tahoe. Obviously, the Fords, we've only had those just for, they're only a year old for the newest ones we've had. And they've done us quite well. The two, my Charger and two other remaining Chargers are doing just fine. We have one right now, just having an AC issue looked at, but they've, they've done us very well for buying them the way we did, being used. First two we bought used, actually, the first three we bought used from Kansas State Patrol and their fleet system at 50,000 miles. And they've done us very well, so.
So they're a lot of patrol driving now?
Mostly, they drive the Ford PI, the police interceptor Explorers, and some Chargers and some Durangos.
Are we still looking at trying to buy some of them or are we still looking?
No, I think at this point, getting the newer vehicles is, once we've gotten our strength up in the numbers, which is what we kind of accomplished, buying those used and having that cheaper price, we're able to do that. I think now it's better and safer to have the new vehicles. And they're short on vehicles themselves, so the quantity of vehicles they have for sale is not as high as it used to be.
Proceeds from the auction of the Tahoe, we will deposit those in Equipment Reserve Fund. And they'll be, you know, it'll be put in as a police revenue essentially. So they'll be able to utilize that for, ideally for part of their fleet purchase in 2022.
And that $19,000 that we got back from insurance.
Instead of how the car drives, how's the seat? Comfortable? Charger seat comfortable?
Are we referring to the driver's seat or the?
Yeah, the driver's seat.
Prisoner cage. Okay. Prisoner cage is not comfortable.
Driver's seat, wasn't that the best seat?
You know what? The guys on the new Explorers are very happy with them. They're very comfortable.
Well, you don't have to really bend down, you know?
Not as much, not as much as a Charger.
Yeah.
You do actually settle down into the Explorer just a little bit.
Yeah.
But they, you know, I'm a fairly small statured individual, so I don't have any trouble with larger statured individuals. We're not as comfortable in the Chargers. And so the, I'd say with our fleet having the mix just right now, what we have, it works out great. But obviously, I'm, I'm happy so far with the Explorers, the room that we have, the stores that we have with the interior storage rather than a trunk storage of a Charger as far as regulating the temperature of the equipment we have and its dust and things like that. They work out really nice right now.
Well, you're going to approve? I'd like to approve. Motion by Michael.
Second.
Second by Brent. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Honorable mayor and city council, this is item H5 zoning addition rural urban intent. So a quick background, as the city grows, it creates an opportunity for the boundaries of the city to be expanded and annexation to occur. When this happens, certain properties that have existed as stockyards or horse stables or any other county-related use become non-conforming when they are annexed. These land uses have no definition under our current zoning. It would be either non-conforming or require a conditional use permit for certain properties as they are brought onboard to exist. To prevent this, a less stringent and more county-friendly zoning classification will be introduced to alleviate the necessity for rest of these land uses and code violations when the property owner agrees to annex. On May 10th, 2021, the planning commission and the governing body discussed the idea of RUI, urban intent, in detail. Community development director, me and myself, created a draft ordinance reflecting these comments, which is being presented today. On June 14th, the planning commission approved the inclusion of the zoning classification RUI with urban intent or rural urban intent. So just kind of a reflection of that, a little bit more of the analysis that's continued is that the city council is considering including new zoning classification RUI, urban intent. And this new zoning classification recognizes the properties rural cannot be immediately serviced by the city with water and sewer, et cetera. And so basically, as we're trying to bring all these properties that surround the city onboard to make it as easy as possible, this is a very relaxed zoning classification that allows them to keep the majority of their existing land uses, whether it's, you know, horse stables or granary or grain silo, all those type of things. It allows them to keep their water, their sewer, basically. And it's saying that at some point, we're going to accommodate them with urban infrastructure. But for now, we recognize that they have a more of a county feel to it. And so we're going to allow them to keep that county feel. The new zoning will allow the city to define its growth area, which is important as we experience growth from Wichita coming at us on our east boundary. This will help us define that growth area and grow in a more structured way. And Wichita currently has a similar zoning classification, which they call residential, rural residential zoning.
zoning. And we're emulating that a little bit. So we're adopting a lot of the same classifications they have. We're just taking a little bit more proactive approach. So analysis continued. These are all the permitted uses. And as you can see, we have agricultural, dog kennel, livestock holding, utility stations, animal care clinic, boat and RV storage, agricultural storage, and a whole slew of other land uses that you would not typically see in an urban setting. This is specifically to cater to county-related uses and to grow and allow them to come onboard. So they don't feel like that there's going to be an immediate conflict when we talk about annexing. So lot size requirements, no limit, no limit on these either. We did have maximum structure height. Planning commission wanted to go ahead and strike that. They said, why add any unnecessary burdens? So we removed structure height as well. We kept the minimum front, side, rear. They reflect an R1, maximum lot coverage none as well. There's a lot of really big lots out there. There's a lot of really small lots. And having that no minimum, maximum lot coverage will really help us with non-conformity. So that's, that pretty much sums it up. There was obviously a small publication cost as required, and it is approved as a form legally speaking. It is recommended that city council both one, waive the reading of the ordinance with the motion, and then two, approve the inclusion of zoning classification RUI with a roll call. But any open questions, comments, thoughts? As I mentioned, this was a reflection of the May 10 joint session, so.
Motion to waive the reading.
Motion to waive the reading.
Second.
Motion by Brent, second by Michael. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Motion to approve the ordinance.
Motion approved the warrant, the inclusion of the zoning classification RUI.
Motion by Brent.
Second.
Second by Larry.
All in favor?
The roll call.
Roll call.
Yeah, councilmember Zimmerman?
Yes.
Councilmember Larkin?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Councilmember Proctor?
Yes.
Excuse me, that's Mayor, or Larkin, sorry.
I know.
That'd be ordinance 872.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you, guys. Honorable mayor and city council, just some updated drone shots courtesy of our drone pilot Thatcher Modi. You can see that they've started on the, from Friday's image, that they had started on the decking for the third floor. And that is substantially completed as of this afternoon. So they're making great progress there. Arbor Creek, you can tell this is looking back to the northwest, just additional development rounded out. Phase one with phase two extending down and back, which was approved over the last two meetings. Cloverleaf, looking back almost straight east. Elbridge showing significant infill of the third and final phase. Rustic Creek, this, you can see the road outlines and the detention ponds and the access road connecting to 199th. And the.
Good one.
Yeah, which we had Public Works helping out with the bucket truck to get some of the higher, higher spots. So we appreciate that. And there's the folks that did the bulk of the labor. And a good aerial view from the front taken this morning. Reminder that National Night Out will be Friday, August 13th in linear park. And it will obviously conclude with the fireworks show that was approved this evening. We'll have the pool closing, our annual movie, Jumanji, and that'll be Thursday, August 5th from 8:30 to 11:30 with final day, August 15th. We'll have a request for purchase for a new back trailer at the August 16th meeting, and that'll be approximately $63,600. Upcoming agenda items include the sign regulation discussion, the standard traffic ordinance, and Uniform Public Offense Code that's adopted annually, which incorporates essentially the latest legislative changes from the 2021 Kansas Legislative Session. We'll have the back trailer purchased. Then going into September, we'll have the Tuesday following Labor Day budget hearing and meeting. And then we'll have the building design standards discussed at the September 16th meeting. We'll also have a discussion occurring on the 16th and probably over into the 7th of the nuisance abatement and condemnation for cedar, as well as some other real estate items around the community as well. That concludes my report. If there are no questions, thank you.
All right. I'm just going to ask Brian if we're still keeping an eye on the discharge down on 23rd off the storm sewer, the weeds and all that, that blocking and maybe that cleaned up down there?
We have done some of that. However, we believe there's been a change in ownership and that severed our essential, our maintenance agreement for that corridor now.
I should know if we need to keep that clean so that it doesn't build up before it settles up back up into our storm system.
Yeah, we'll certainly, we'll certainly.
Absolutely.
That's part of our regular, that is part of the regular.
Regular clean.
Stormwater.
Yeah. We were just talking about mowing. In the past, we had mowed so far back there. But when the property changed ownership, as our understanding in the agreement, went out the window for mowing that area. But we will, we do make sure that the water flows.
Is there a lot of that service building out in the center? It's backing up, they have storm sewers.
And then we have a big problem. Yeah, I agree. Yes, we'll double check that again, but we have been watching that. So.
What about our wells? Are they up and over?
Yes and no. This is something that we didn't talk about this morning, Brian, and we should have, it should have been brought up. We've had to shut seven down, let me get a building here. We've had to shut seven down because out of nowhere, our production dropped from about 500 gallons per minute down to 145 gallons a minute. We checked all of our controls, all of our electric, everything is good, all power going to is good. Clark well was out Friday. It'll be back this week. They're going to pull that out. It's going to have to be on their dime. At least that's what I'm going to tell them because the pump in the hole is not functioning properly. They've got some kind of an issue with the pump. That's, it's a submersible pump, a submersible motor, of course, and they have some kind of an issue with that. They want to get out of there quickly and repair it. Well, four is coming along. They have got the liner going into it and they're, they're thinking if everything goes right, maybe by this week, we will be able to fire it up. They're, they're very confident with that. But seven, I don't know if it's a manufacturing issue with the pump. We don't know until they pull it out, but they're going to have to pull that again.
I'm going to think if they're just doing it, they've been on the ball out here as quick as they could.
And they, and I believe they are. It sounds to me like every single company that does this type of work is very busy right now. And then I think they're, they're doing what they can to get there as quickly as possible. I really do.
And it's a limited, it's a, it's a, there's a limited number of providers.
Yes. They were saying this week, they want to be here. We're going, we got a brand new building, and now we've got to pull part of the roof off of. So we'll have to do that tomorrow, which we knew we would have to in the future, but normally you don't have to do that until you have to pull the well. So, but we're going to, we'll have to pull that off, part of that roof off and prepare that for them. And when they get here, and then they should be here shortly to pull that. They're pretty quick once everything's, when everything's working properly and there's no sands in the hole holding the column or the pump or anything in, they're pretty quick getting that out of the, out of the hole, doing what they need to do and putting it back in.
We got to pay our staff to tear off this roof? It's their fault?
Well, pretty much. We'll just, we'll just send out a public works staff and we'll, we'll basically dismantle a portion of that. We knew we would have to in the future when we pulled it, but we didn't think we'd have to pull it within two weeks of putting, having the building put up. So that's, that's the report on those, unfortunately, on seven and makes my twitch.
Okay.
Thank you.
No comment. Good.
Brent?
Oh, so I get that. No, I'm not missing. I'm missing. Well, sorry. Final interrupt. Thank you all for painting, even though I couldn't make it. So anyways.
How is it?
Well, I have a comment. I was going to say, if you wanted to, if you just wanted to.
I'm not gonna, I'm not, I don't have.
If you just want to hurry your thing up, you know, you good?
Yeah, I'm good. I'm good.
Thank you, Larry, Brent, Public Works for helping, and, and our favorite Boy Scout for painting the community. Thank you guys so much.
And Thatcher's beast, though.
Oh, and Thatcher. Yes.
Thatcherism beast.
I didn't hear that.
Beast, though.
Can we play overtime?
Especially want to thank Brent. He ran up there to grip that. So Thatcher was busting his butt out there. He was getting that cherry picker. I thought he was going to try to buy it.
And the Zimmerman family is the bomb. I mean, they were all there.
Awesome. Well, thank you guys so much. Well, all righty, that's all I have to say. If that's it, then do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Michael, second by Brent. All in favor say aye.
Aye.